All right. Censor yourselves appropriately based on that. It's warmer than it was. You know, Jeremy came up here earlier with sixty-five. Well, when I came up here earlier, it was ice cold, so I asked him to turn up something like, can we get some heat up here? And so he had to do some changes, but it would get a little bit more brutal.
Yeah. Nighttime. Sleeping. I believe we're ready.
Yep, I've got six. One, one second.
Okay, no problem.
Why am I seeing his screen and all? Like, shouldn't I see us? It doesn't really, not really matter.
Well, if you're not seeing us, then the recording probably.
Like, why am I seeing him and not us? Well, let's try that and we'll see what the difference is. Okay, we're ready.
All right. We'll come to order, please, if we would stand for the place of allegiance.
Our place of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in universal, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll have roll call, Mr. McConnell, please.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah.
Commissioner, absent. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Winfield.
Here.
Commissioner Mudry.
Here.
Commissioner Metta.
Here.
Secretary McConnell is present. Vice Chair Schweitzer.
Present.
And Chair Hunt Proctor.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I got Vice Chair.
Thought you were. Who's the Vice Chair?
No.
Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well. He came. Who had to take care.
What can I say?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Next, we have approval of the agenda.
So moved. Word.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it and noes. That's definitely me and myself. Approve of the minutes, please.
Approve of the minutes.
Yes.
I want to approve the minutes for the October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
It's been moved by Mr. Schweitzer and.
Word.
移到by Mr. McConnell. Y'all, all y'all must have got paid good this meeting, huh? Everybody out there. Any questions, concerns, comments? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approval of the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
That's what we did.
Yeah, I think that's what we just did.
Yes, we just did.
That's what we did.
Do you have to approve all of the agendas? I got two.
Oh, I got one.
Oh, okay.
For the agenda.
All right, correspondence. I got two approvals. Okay. Okay. Correspondence, we have none. Oh, business, we have none?
One second. For correspondence, we, I did hand out one letter that we received this morning from a property owner, actually the owner of the Red Roof Inn adjacent to the site that's up for, uh, public hearing tonight. So I've handed that out to everybody here.
Okay, thank you. So noted for the work. Thank you. Um, whole business. Hope business to come before us. There being none or move to public hearings? Mr. McConnell.
Now, Chair, we have a special land use permit, number PSL two twenty twenty-four dash zero zero fifteen, killer building systems and permits, demolish car wash and expand gasoline station at seventy four oh four West Saginaw Highway.
All right, thank you.
I'll be taking this one.
Okay.
So, uh, thanks. Thank you, everyone. It's good to see you again this year. So, um, on the overhead right now, I just want to orient you to ask where this property is. I'll click on it, but the, uh, doesn't really help us a lot. So Rington Blue up on the overhead right now is the parcel. It's about three acres that is proposed for a special land use permit and site plan review approval on your agenda this evening. It, the project generally is the redevelopment of the gas station. We can get into the details of what that is here in a minute. But I just wanted to point it out. So it's almost four acres. It's significantly larger than probably what you see just from West Saginaw Highway. So we have not only the gas station, but a significant wooded lot behind there. So it's just a block over from where we're at here at Township Building. In between, um, where we're at in the site, we've got Horrocks. There's a Burger King drive-through. This is a Red Roof Inn. We have the subject site. Um, I believe this is a Denny's restaurant, and then there's a Travel Lodge motel, hotel, hotel behind there. So that's just the uses right in the vicinity, directly north of the property. The Horrocks site is pretty expansive. So it's, uh, Horrocks extends, uh, further back into all of this area behind subject parcels as well. So just wanted to give you a little context on the, on the property. So we have two separate items on your agenda tonight. First is the special land use permit, and then we'll have the site plan review a little bit later. But generally, the project is the redevelopment of the gas station. It's not a complete redevelopment. It's a, the demolishing, the car wash that's on the site, that's on the far western portion of the site that has been on the site for a long time and is not in use. They're demolishing the four hundred square foot, or eight hundred and fifty-four square foot gas station building. So the convenience store part of it that's currently under the canopy that's on the site right now, that's been demolished and moved north away from the site. And then generally, the canopy is staying in the, about the same spot. There's, it's being squared off. Um, but no significant changes in the location of that. So the applicant is proposing four new gas pumps, so there'll be a total of twelve on the site. There are eight now. They're adding four. On what you'll see, I'm going to pull up the site plan right now. So you can see what has been proposed on the site, and the applicant is here in the room. I will let him, um, provide some information as well, but I wanted to give you this to start. Excuse me. So on the site is the gas station here. We have the convenience store that's, um, larger than proposed, so it's on the proposed site plan, it's over four thousand square feet. So it's going from eight fifty-four to over four thousand square feet. And adding some parking um, on the site and the, what I wanted to call attention to particularly is this drive. So on the site plan that you have in your packets tonight, they're showing a driveway, or, uh, excuse me, a curb cut and drive out to a private drive that serves the Red Roof Inn site. The, we learned this morning that that was proposed, but the applicant and the owner of the property that the drive is, which is the, the gentleman you got the letter from here, the Red Roof Inn owner, has, they have not come to an agreement on this driveway. So in your review of the property, just assume that that's, at this point, is not happening, that drop out to the private drive, and if we learn otherwise later, then that, that's fine. Uh, I don't think it really changes the process or this review. Though we did provide a condition in this, in the approval that addresses that, that we would have, in, in any scenario, we need fully executed signed access easement between the property owner. So until they have that, whether it's shown on the plan or not, it doesn't really matter for our purposes. So as you may know, the property, so it's under, it's a gas station that is a u- of use allowed by SLUP in our ordinance. So this is following that process. Uh, site plan review application has also been filed. That's being processed concurrently with this request. So that will go, um, all of, that, that process stops with, with the planning commission, but the special land use permit goes on to the township board for final decision. So the planning commission is just advisory, or not just advisory, is advisory on the special land use portion of this request. So, um, I'm just going to call really brief attention to our staff memo. It includes responses to the standard, uh, standard land, special land use permit standards of approval. So there are seven or eight of those. And then there are sp- specific use standards, those being the ve- for vehicle fueling stations. So the ordinance provides just a couple, um, additional criteria to consider and for these types of land uses, one of which are that pump islands and canopy have to be set back specific distances from rear and side yard setbacks, which they are. Or rear inside property lines, which they are. And then there are standards for, I'm just going to run through these really briefly, ancillary services. So that's like repair and maintenance of vehicles. In this case, this particular property does not provide those services, so it's not applicable. Ancillary service and equipment like vacuums, air hoses, propane tank, that kind of thing. They, the applicant has indicated that they will have those, so specifically air hoses and propane tank exchange box. The, those will be along the storefront of the building. And they are not prov- proposing vacuums on the site. There are standards related to parking, so this property does the parking. Sorry, I'm monitoring a lot of different, you're in front of me. One second. Make sure everybody's, everybody's online and happy. Well, at least they're online. I guess we can't, can't assume they're happy. Okay, so, um, so last thing is parking and a car wash. So the parking, the property, the project does meet the minimum parking standards for the, this type of land use. And also, uh, for car wash, in this case, a car wash is not being proposed. So the car wash, the, the old car wash that's there is being demoed, gone, not being replaced. There is a motion in your me- meeting packet, should you be interested in recommending approval of the special land use permit. We have provided eleven conditions on the special land use permit. A lot of these are boilerplate. So it's just, um, specific to the site plan and what, what exactly do you be recommending approval of. But also the requirement for site plan approval prior to issuance of a building permit. Um, continued compliance with the specific standards for this type of land use in our zoning ordinance. A provision or a condition prohibiting repair and maintenance of vehicles on the premises. The township is requesting a fifteen-foot-wide shared utility and pathway easement across the frontage, the West Saginaw Highway frontage of the parcel. And a little explanation on that. The township is not, right now, there is, um, sidewalk in front of the property, and it's outside of the property lines. It's in the right-of-way. Long-term, the township has, um, has done some water reliability studies and does have an interest in expanding the pathway system along West Saginaw. However, there's a lot of internal work that has to happen before that project can kick off. So the plan in at least the short term is to request, uh, is to not pres- uh, wha- there's one reality where we would require the construction of a wider pathway across the frontage of the property. The township right now, due to some utility issues, is not there. So instead of that, we're asking for a utility, a shared e- easement that would encompass both utility work and, long-term, a wider pathway along the front. So while the township's not ready to act on those and to do those projects, we want to get those easements in place now, so that should the opportunity come along in the future, that we have it. Long-winded explanation for a simple concept, but. Um, and then, uh, number ten, um, in the memo of conditions is related to that, uh, the access agreement. I don't have an issue with, uh, pr- continuing with this project, recommending approval and approving the site plan if it's, if you decide to do that with this driveway shown. Again, they can't build it like this without approval, so I don't really think it is, um, matters to us one way or the other. So that's where we're at. Um, I am here. The applicant, um, may want to address you and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, page three of the letter from LRE Resource Engineering, under number seven. It calls out vehicle charging. I haven't seen anything as far as the notations as regarding that. Now, there's any other location of the report. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Go speak up, please.
Um, hi. Um, they listed that as a potential for, in the future, not today.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd just like to point out an inconsistency in the letter we got today uh, from the Rosenberg firm on behalf of the Red Roof Inn. Uh, they cite, uh, an increase of three hundred times the current size. Uh, obviously, that's, that's an error and, and should be corrected. Uh, I would also point out uh, that even with the increase in the number of pumps, uh, it seems unlikely to me that we would generate a pro- uh, traffic increase anywhere near the three hundred percent that they cite in theirs. So I would, uh, just simply note those for the record, uh, as we're considering this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Um, since Doug brought this up, I have similar reservations with this letter. Uh, three hundred times the size, okay? That would mean that the present building is fifteen square feet. Okay? And when somebody states a three hundred percent increase in the traffic, I want to see the data. Otherwise, it's just a opinion of some sort. So I, I discount this letter. Thank you, Doug.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Want to make a motion if we're ready?
Yes, sir. We want to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, we have to open, we have to open. We did open the public hearing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We didn't make a motion too, but I read it.
Okay. Support.
There was a motion to open a public hearing.
And support.
We need to vote on it.
All those in favor of opening, uh, a public hearing at this time, please?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Would you like to make a comment, sir? If so, you would step up and give your name and address, please? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm Scott Olson, uh, Tailored Building Systems. Uh, we are out of Grand Rapids, Michigan. Our address is five five zero Kirtland Street Southwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five oh seven. So I'm, I'm here on behalf of, uh, Tailored Building Systems and Blarney Castle tonight. Um, just wanted to say that, uh, Blarney Castle has been a long-term member of Delta Township, uh, currently operating two facilities, uh, in Delta Township currently. Uh, one south of here on Mount Hope, and then this particular Shell station that's been here since I don't know, mid nineteen eighties probably, would be my guess. Um, they are a, uh, they are a great, um, organization. Uh, we do a ton of work for them uh, throughout Mid-Michigan, northern, uh, northern Michigan. Uh, we continue to do work and their goal, uh, basically is to drive new business, uh, into their stores, and the way they do that is by uh, updating all their stores. So they, they come in, they find stores like this that, that need a little rehab, they put some TLC into them, uh, they make expansions, and it really will drive, um, a little bit more traffic into the site, um, just based on the number of gas pumps that they have, but it will not be three hundred times what's currently being used. So that, I'm glad somebody brought that up, because that was going to be my comment, as I was sitting there doing the math, and I read that letter, I'm like, that's not correct, but. Um, I can't tell you that they are just, they're, um, they're a great business to have. Um, they're very concerned with their public image. Um, uh, it means a lot to them for, for what they do, so. Um, I don't think you can have a better business partner. As far as a gas station company is concerned, they're just very, uh, they're just a, a very good partner to have in, in Delta Township. So. Is there any questions to you guys that I can ask?
Yeah. Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I mean, with the increase in size uh, in the, the building going from just under nine hundred to over four thousand, uh, what is the proposed use for that additional space, expanding the product line or providing other services? Just how is that additional space going to be utilized?
Um, so most of these stores that they do have, um, i- it's general convenience. So they'll have a larger merchandising section, which will be candy, pop, cigarettes, the general consensus of a gas station. Yeah. I don't know in this particular one, a lot of them will have some sort of a hot beverage counter. Um, I don't know in this one in particular if they're, if they are providing a hot beverage food service in there. But if that's the case, then, and some of them, they do provide hot beverage or hot food service, which then would have to meet, you know, the local health department regulations, but I, I don't think they have that in this one.
Hey, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.
Now, Blarney Castle operates the Shell Gas Station at, um.
Crates.
Crates.
Yep. That's correct. Yeah, that one has the McDonald's in it currently. And there's some talk, I think there's some talk about demoing part of that one out. Um, if I remember right, the car wash section on the back is going to come down on that one.
Yeah, we have a site plan.
Yeah.
Um, the early process administratively, but that'll remove the, similarly, will remove the car wash building and basically turn the footprint of the car wash into a few extra parking spaces.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, with the increase of four pumps, is there a need for an increase in the size of the tank?
No. No, the tanks are staying as they are.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved by Mr. Winfield, seconded by Mr. McConnell to close the public hearing. Do we need to vote on that closing?
Yeah.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.
Ready to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move the planning commission recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit request from Tailored Building Systems to construct a four thousand three hundred eighty-eight square foot gas station convenience store at seven four zero four West Saginaw Highway as described in case number PSL two oh two four dash zero zero one five for the following reasons, of which there are two, with the following conditions of approval, of which there are eleven.
Thank you, Mr.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mudry, supported.
No, moved by Mr. Winfield.
I'm sorry, Mr. Money. Mr. Winfield is supported by Mr. Zokis, Zokus. Okay. Uh, any other comments? Please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
We got to do a ring go roll call.
Right, now you're Mr. McConnell.
I was sleeping, I'm sorry. Okay. Commissioner Mudry.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Schweitzer.
Support.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Support.
Commissioner Winfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Metta.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell supports and, uh, Chair Hunt Proctor.
Support.
Madam. Did I miss anybody?
No, that was eight.
All right, thank you very much. The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, site plan still, but. Your choice. Just a minute. All right, the next item on the agenda is the site plan for this same project, so really not a lot to add, other than just to remind everyone that there is a life on the site plan. If you choose to recommend approval tonight, or if you choose to approve the site plan tonight, this project has a life, um, a long life outside of this room. Um, after this approval, the applicant works with the planning team, and we're kind of liaisons to the rest of the township for fire, um, engineering, utilities, reviews, and that all happens after the, after the bell rings on the planning commission approval. Um, so that's the, really the, the main thing, and then the process, the, the public process ends tonight with, uh, with your decision. So if you have any questions, there's a staff memo that responds to the site plan uh, criteria in your meeting packet. There's really nothing different to point out than before. The only, um, thing I would share is there are a few more conditions because of the nature of this moving on then to um, a, a different, more technical review process. But there's really nothing in here that is different, that impacts the project design or anything like that. So, um, there is a motion in your meeting, uh, yeah, there is a motion in your meeting packet, should be, you be so inclined.
We do.
Yeah.
Who's opening the public hearing?
Public hearing. Yeah, site plans aren't public hearing there.
No.
No.
It's listed as a public hearing.
Uh, we have, no, that's, that's incorrect. I, I, I don't know why we do them that way. Kind of odd. But we don't, this is, this, site plans are not preceded by notice, so they're not a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? We'll change that for the future.
Good. Madam Chair, if there's no questions or discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move that the planning commission approved the site plan to construct a four thousand three hundred eighty-eight square foot building located seven four zero four West Saginaw Highway, subject to the following conditions, of which there are fourteen.
Yes. It's been moved and supported for the discussion. This is a voice vote, correct?
Right.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the self-storage zoning amendment.
Okay, I'll take that one. I'm just giving you one second. I gotta pull up my memo here. So there is a memo in your meeting packet, uh, providing some basic information about this amendment request. But I'm going to pull up here. A second. Okay. Thank you. It was nice to see you. We'll be in touch with you, um, future steps. So, um, in front of you tonight is, this is, this is a public hearing for a zoning amendment uh, to our zoning ordinance that would remove self-storage facilities as used permitted right now in our commercial zoning district by special land use permit. Uh, completely remove the, the land use from commercial zoning. So this was an amendment that was initiated by the township board and, um, and, and it's meeting here in November. Uh, the, right now, self-storage facilities are currently allowed to. The, right now, self-storage facilities are currently allowed to zoning districts, commercial and industrial. And they are allowed by special land use permit. So in both of those districts, and they have to be on parcels of at least two acres in size. So what this amendment would do would be remove these facilities from commercial completely. They would remain in industrial but not be allowed in commercial anymore. A little bit of background on this, so I actually brought this to the board and the board did agree to initiate the, the amendment. We receive a lot of inquiries for self-storage facilities in a lot of different forms. This is like the fourth government I've worked in and it's, it's a popular product because it's popular with investors, real estate development investors. So there is a lot of interest in it and there have been, there has been quite a bit of interest in the last, in my, during my time here. One of the challenges inherent with that, so I'm not judging the land use as is of itself. We wanna think about the land use in context of our community and does it fit with the long-term land use goals? So, so that's kind of the, a little bit of just background on how this, how this got to here. Further than that, when the, when you talked about the, the Delta Crossings development in phase, I think it's six of that project, they do, one of their conceptual plans also has a self-storage facility. And it, so we have several of them now, there are five self-storage facilities in Delta Township, three in commercial zoning districts and two in industrial. There are 43 in the greater Lansing region. So there's a lot of self-stores options in this region. The, one of the concerns is retaining, like maintaining the viability of the West Saginaw Highway corridor. And again, it's, it's a perspective and I guess an opinion. But these types of land uses, as I mentioned, they're popular among real estate investors, they're cheap to build. But that from a community perspective, perspective, they're inactive land uses, they don't provide jobs for local economy. And really they represent an opportunity cost that could displace future development. So bottom line being that we were develops, if every self-storage inquiry turned into a project here, we would have a lot of them and we would continue to see more, I think is the, is the bottom line. So that's the kind of where, where this started out of. And it's, it's specifically because our commercial, where we're seeing them and is on, the inquiries that I've received have been on West Saginaw. Now, there are not a lot of kind of greenfield sites left on the corridor. But there are several, there are several large sites that to be, that would still either be developed or be redeveloped. So there's a couple of things that this aligns with. Really, it's the, we have an improved Saginaw Highway objective in the board's strategic plan. The whole impetus of the West Saginaw Highway Corridor Improvement Authority is to revitalize, reinvigorate, however you wanna say it, along West Saginaw. These land uses don't necessarily, I'm talking self-storage, don't necessarily align with those visions. So what, the proposal in front of you is, from a technical standpoint, is pretty simple. It would simply remove from the self-storage facilities from the list of allowed uses in commercial and it would limit it to only industrial. If the land uses might be more aligned with industrial activity, they don't always rely, and I'm sure an operator or an owner would, would disagree with this, but don't necessarily rely on high traffic. They're more of a passive land use, they don't rely on like spin-off activity. And then usually the way they're designed are more aligned with what we might see in industrial. That is not always the case, and I'm very aware of that, that there are new designs for self-storage facilities that incorporate office facades or kind of a fake commercial facade. But then would have like the storage behind there, so something to have on the storefront. However, that's not, certainly not always the case. And the township does not have strong design, design guidelines to compel a fancy version of a self-storage facility, I would say. So in front of you tonight really is just a recommendation on this proposal. As you see, I can pull it up, there's a map in our, we did have our staff map where these are all at in the community right now. So there's three along West Saginaw and we've got two down in industrial. But as I mentioned, there are, I've probably talked to 10 different operators in the last six months that are interested in coming here. So there's a motion in your meeting packet to recommend approval to the board or make whatever recommendation you may choose to do so. The amendment process, we haven't done a lot of zoning amendments, but it is a public hearing. The planning commission is advisory on this, would go back to the township board for final action. It would have to be noticed again at the end if we did, if the board ultimately adopted this amendment. So I did include the district table in your, geez, in your meeting packet just to see what this looks like. If you don't spend a lot of time in the zoning ordinance, this is just an excerpt from that. But if you look at the screen, you can see self-storage facilities are listed here. And then there, right now, they're allowed, this S means special land use permit and both off, they're both commercial and industrial. Really, we would just strike this S. That's the extent of the technical change to the ordinance. All the same standards, everything else would apply.
Madam Chair. Peter, you mentioned that the idea for this came from the township board itself. Is that right? Did I hear that correct?
I presented to the township board suggesting that we consider an amendment like this.
And was there consensus to move forward then?
Absolutely, yeah, they did, they voted to initiate the amendment, send it to you.
Okay.
For a recommendation, it'll come back to them at the end of this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that, first of all, I was gonna give the township board credit. So they obviously got it right.
They deserve credit.
But you explained the rationale well, it makes an awful lot of sense to me. So I really think this is sort of like a no-brainer, I'm just supporting this.
Madam Chair. Just a couple of, of points. And I guess starting out with a question, under the current structure, is there enabling language under the approval for a special permit? That would allow us on a case-by-case basis to review requests for these kinds of properties according to their location and the other normal standards? Or are we more constrained in terms of needing to apply that broadly? And say, you know, we would have to find something very specific that was objectionable in order to turn down a special land use permit?
We have the special land use permit now. But it would have, you'd have to find a pretty specific reason, a pretty, and provide a lot of support in making that decision to deny a, a special land use permit for.
Probably be insufficient to simply say, we think this use of property in this specific location is not appropriate. That would likely create some issues.
I, I think you could certainly, I mean, yes, it would, I think ultimately it would probably create issues. If, if it were to follow the route that you're, that you're sharing, the chances of, of a denial being either, maybe not overturned, but followed by litigation is higher.
Right.
I think if you were, the cleaner way would just be to remove it from the district and have it in industrial, not even to have to consider an application to turn one down.
Yeah, so in, in light of that, I guess I've got just one more observation slash question. Are there, I mean, I'm in complete agreement with getting rid of these facilities or stopping these facilities along the Saginaw corridor. It's completely inconsistent with the Saginaw Highway development. I guess the question I would ask is, are there sites currently zoned as commercial on which we would contemplate allowing these kinds of facilities? And if so, this kind of blanket removal of not even having the opportunity for a special land use permit, they would be completely precluded from all commercial, correct?
They would be, and I think one of the, the real challenge, if you look at the map on that, I don't know what, what map you guys see better, but the, the red is commercial, there are not a lot of sites. I mean, so commercial's really limited to West Saginaw, a little bit down Marketplace Boulevard. Then we've got just a couple of spots in other, on other places in the community. So I'm not sure that there are specifics. So we've got, on this map, we're showing undeveloped commercial parcels over two acres. So these areas with this red hash marks.
Yep.
Are ones, are places where they could potentially locate now and they're not already located within.
Okay. I just wanted to throw that out for consideration to make sure we don't have places where we would allow those that we are painting ourselves into a corner on. It sounds as if we aren't, so, thank you.
Madam Chair. I come at this from a different perspective. First off, I relate to George Carlin with stuff. People accumulate stuff. They have to have a place for that stuff. And apartments are one, are multi-family dwellings. They're limited in a place for that stuff. And the last two that we have approved have been off, off the beaten path or so to speak, with the fact that the one just over here where it used to be the Case Credit Union and the one where the Zapzone used to be. Those are off, off the main, main drag. So that's, that's, I see a need for that in a more residential or mixed-use area. For that simple reason, people, you know, they have to go to a, down to an industrial site to store other things. I locate it from that perspective.
Mr. Brayden, is there any data on what the demand is?
I don't have data, it's more cer, evident, like, I guess it's called circumstantial evidence, that just number of calls that I've received talking to developers. I know nationally there, but I, I'm not citing statistics, but it's a popular land use. They do a lot, just in my reading, that it's a cheap lucrative investment for real estate companies. But that, I mean, at least my concern is the economic development director slash planner is that, that they're easy to build and they're cheap to build and we are, we may see more of them soon.
Is your main concern that's this corridor?
My main concern is West Saginaw Highway in general, but that also happens to be where our primary commercial district is.
Madam Chair. Just to reply to Commissioner Schweitzer's comment, I don't consider Zapzone off the beaten path. It's right, right there within that particular area. And certainly that parcel itself, which is now a storage area, when Zapzone was there, which is now has moved, but when Zapzone was there, that type of location still draws people in to the other commercial interests and retail interests along the corridor and just behind the corridor, such as restaurants and other shops. So I, I don't, in, in my mind, I don't think it's accurate to describe the old Zapzone location as off the beaten path. Off the beaten path would need to be, if it was on Mount Hope Highway. Off the beaten path to me would be the two in the south part of the township. But I don't want us to become known as the community of self-storage units when there are 43 of them around the region, around, around the Lansing area, and we already have five. So I'm in full support of this change.
Yeah, but the last, the three that I think of are close to multi-family residential. And I see it from that perspective still. Maybe it's not directly off the beaten path to say that the Zapzone, but it's, but it's back, sits back away from the, from Saginaw Highway.
Public hearing? Move to open a public hearing?
For clarification, given that there's no one here, do we have to open and close the public hearing?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to open a public hearing. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
And support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much.
You can do that in one motion.
We could have.
Move to open and close.
Could you do that in one motion?
I don't know.
That seems like a stretch. Yeah, I don't.
Don't think so.
I wouldn't.
All right, so I've been kind of pondering and waiting through this one. I definitely don't wanna be known as a township that has an overabundance of these. I mean, clearly the land use is important and there's a lot of economic components to it that go along with each of those thoughts. However, you know, as I've been thinking about the locations of the last few that we've had in there and the distance between where those are currently located versus the industrial track, if I have a lot of stuff and I live in an apartment, I don't necessarily have means to travel and I'm a township, how do I have this service provided to me? And so my question is, is there a way to develop this policy for this change that isn't a binary function between either, you know, this specific zone area versus another? Is there a way to have not spot treatment, but some sort of a hybrid component that goes along with it? And there, there needs to be some sort of a mechanism where if there's, and it's, it's tough to measure. I don't know how you would do it, it'd be incredibly subjective.
Which would open us up to litigation.
Exactly, and, and that's the thing, is that we certainly don't wanna be arbitrary or appreciative in any of our decisions. But at the same time, I mean, there are folks that definitely can benefit from that service and necessarily have the ability to drive to there, which you look on the maps over the shoulder over here, I mean, it's all on the very southern part of the township. Significance is, we would not be seeing an increase in these anywhere. So I almost feel like it's inequity. How this gets treated, and I'm just wondering if there are any.
Is it? I'll answer. I, the only other thing I can think of would be some sort of overlay, establishing some kind of overlay district. I'm not really quite sure how that would work. We'd have to identify where we'd wanna see self-storage facilities. I, I will note that, just by taking this, if, if you choose to recommend approval or denial and then the board ultimately approves or denies the amendment, the storage facilities are in business now, will stay, I mean, I can't say they'll stay in business, but they will be allowed to continue to be in business. And there are even some avenues where they could expand. So even as a non-conforming land use. So it won't remove these facilities from their current locations right now.
Their grandfather there.
Yeah, what's that?
Yeah, grandfather there.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to harp on this, but you know, there comes a point in time in our role as planning commissioners when I think we do have to decide what we want our major commercial corridor to look like. And I think this is, to me, this is one of those times. We already have one, two, three along that commercial corridor. I think Peter mentioned that as part of the Delta Crossings development, there's plans to put another one in there. So I'm, I'm more than happy to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
One way I think that somebody could get around this is that they apply for a zoning change within a piece of property to zone it industrial. Okay, so it comes back to this committee. Do we feel that it's intrusive? You know, we just deny the zoning change?
You could ju, yeah, someone could apply for if there's a property on the corridor they really wanna pursue for a storage facility. They could propose a zoning to industrial. It may not be received well just because it could potentially be spot zoning if it's on the commercial corridor. So that is one other avenue that they would need to exhaust if they, they really wanted to pursue something like that.
Yeah, and I only have one concern with that. If that were to get that kind of a rezoning, we're. that were to get that kind of a rezoning, were to get approved, uh, we open ourselves up, I think, to a, a potential problem down the line, because once it's industrial, there's all kinds of things that can be done by right.
Right.
On an industrial property that we wouldn't necessarily want to open.
But they do have the right to ask.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
Chair. I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposal to amend table four point one eight dash B point one in section four point one eight, district use table of the Delta Township zoning ordinance to remove self-storage facilities as a use permitted in the commercial zoning district and transmit the recommendation to the township board for final consideration.
Support.
Why, felt supported by just a minute, huh, for the discussion?
Yeah, I just would note that, uh, I'll be voting against it uh, on the basis that I agree with Commissioner Meadow uh, that I would like to see further study of this to see if there is a middle ground that we can find rather than a, plus the board prohibition uh, on these kinds of properties. Can we find something that would serve what is obviously a need and likely to be an expanding need uh, while maintaining the integrity of the Saginaw Highway order?
I, I need to briefly correct that this is not a prohibition. They can still be done in industrial areas.
There's a motion, I'll be going.
Me again. Yeah, we're rolling.
Okay, Commissioner Mudry.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
No.
Commissioner Schweitzer.
No.
Commissioner Kozinski.
No.
Commissioner Weinfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Meadow.
No.
Mr. McConnell goes yes. Chairperson Hunt Proctor.
Yes.
Portion fails, I believe.
Or no. We've got eight here, so tied.
Well, it takes a majority of votes, so it fails.
It fails.
Okay. We will send this on to the board. Ready up our, uh, SLUP applications.
Alright. Other business. Do we close the public here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Almost in one motion.
Other business, planning commission annual report, please.
Thank you. So before you, you have a, a copy of the proposed draft twenty twenty-four annual report, which is just a retelling of, of all the adventures we've taken together over the last year. Um, if you look at this ten-year activity report, you can see it was an extremely busy year. Um, probably the busiest, um, obviously the busiest I've had, because this, I've only been here since twenty fifteen, so this is a, essentially a chart of the activity that has occurred in the planning commission since I've been here. Um, going through the next one, we're going to list the SLUPS. Next slide, Peter. So this is a, a, a list of the twelve SLUPS that we've done. Um, all of them were approved by the planning commission and subsequently approved by the township board. Uh, per site plan reviews, these are the ones that came in front of the planning commission. Uh, we had quite a few uh, administrative site plan reviews this year. If you look at our total, um, site plan review list is twenty-six for in twenty twenty-four, and this is just, what was that, eight? Uh, that the planning commission saw, so we were very busy behind the scenes last year. Uh, and we also had four rezonings. Um, pie chart indicates the percent of time that we spent on, you know, each, um, type of project. Um, obviously, site plan review was a large part of it, uh, SLUs and then of the four rezonings. As you can see, um, the ten-year activity report for building development, we haven't had uh, much new residential construction the last couple of years. Um, this is pretty much due to the utility constraints that we're, um, trying to overcome right now, uh, with those projects, uh, you know, we had to pass on quite a few residential properties or projects over the last couple of years. So I would expect that once, um, those floodgates open, we're going to have a, a lot more projects ahead of us for residential opportunities. Any other questions?
I, I do want to know, sorry, with all due respect to Dave, I, I, the utility constraints is not the only issue that we're having. That is, there are portions of the township, we don't have the ability to serve large residential projects right now or other types of land uses. I, I don't want to say it's the only factor.
Here, the commissions.
I'm just to say one, which is not profound, but I noticed in previous years this report had the name of the, uh, Delta Township Board and not the planning commission.
Uh, previously, it had Township Board, Planning Commission, CBA and staff. Um, so as
Well, it didn't always have a planning commission members. Because they call that up. But my only point is, I don't see the township board this time.
And we, we can add them if, if you, if you want.
It ain't a big thing to me, it may be to them. I don't know. Um, yeah, my question was the, uh, I was looking at the there's complaints. Code enforcement. And there've been some big years and some small years. Just any sense of the differences?
There's honestly no real rhyme or reason. Um, honestly, this year, probably half of the letters that I wrote were in one specific neighborhood, fighting RV parking in front yards. Um, generally, it's, it's actually, you know, been kind of quiet for the, um, overall township.
Okay.
Comparing to you for this year. I can't tell you why. Um, you know, I think in other years, we used to have, um, friends of the department who had, you know, walked their neighborhood and and come in with a notepad and give us a list, and maybe they're not with us anymore, or they moved, or.
You, you have no more friends. I'm just kidding.
I just want to thank the planning staff for their work over the last year. Um, there's been some changes, obviously, and, uh, you, you still maintain a, a level of professionalism and, and moving things along, so thank you.
Thanks.
You're here.
Do we have to vote to accept the annual report or?
So in the, my mother's a motion, recommended.
Okay, I move to accept the Delta Township Planning Commission twenty twenty-four annual report and transmit it to the Delta Township Board of Trustees with their name added. As, as required by MCL one twenty-five dash thirty-eight nineteen of the Michigan Planning and ABLE.
Moved by Mr. McConnell, supported by Ms. Bradley, further discussion? We just do avoid voice vote.
This is voice?
This is a public hearing item?
Nope.
No, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Master plan.
Okay, um, I just, this is more of an update item. There's no memo about this, so we, um, we're long overdue for a master plan update. Uh, last master plan, it was the comprehensive plan, it was from twenty thirteen. There was an effort here in twenty nineteen to, uh, working with McKenna to get a new updated version going. Uh, that stalled out for a couple of different reasons. So right now, we're reinvigorating this project. Um, I am working with a, a consultant that I'm not sure that we're going to proceed with, with them or not yet, but wa- waiting to get an estimate on price and scope and all of that. So, um, should that all come together, um, be working with this group, um, we can talk more about how that, how that might work and how you'd like to proceed through the important work of updating the plan. But the, the big, I think the big difference being we received a grant last year, fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's an HRI grant through MISTHA, Housing Readiness Act, or Housing Readiness Grant, that, um, to update the master plan, but with a particular focus on housing. Now, that was actually before the state adopted the rule, the, the new law that requiring that the master plan be updated with housing perspective, so, um, it all worked out, worked very well. So that's the, the particular bend that we're looking to incorporate into the document is housing, and as Dave mentioned, the utility constraints have really driven the development horse around here, um, geographically. So one perspective on the master plan update would be if we're going to grow, where can we grow geographically? Where can we grow based on utility constraints as, as the limiting factor? One scenario I see is, once we've identified these areas where we do have room to grow, um, that might be one area or areas where density could be, um, a factor. So maybe that's an area where we might consider adding density because of the, because, and this is a prediction, um, not a fact, the pla, we may not have as many places as other communities where density is an option. So it's usually just honing in on where can we grow, um, what are our, what are the limiting factors here? Kind of backing into that number rather than prescribing it, knowing that we have these limits. So that conversation will take place over the next several months. I should know more next month as to whom we might be working with, what the scope of that project and the timeline would be. We have a pretty strict timeline on the grant dollars to get those done before the end of the year, so that, I do not see an issue with that happening. It's, but it's going to be fast, it's going to take a lot of work. Um, but like I said, we're long overdue for this, so I think it makes a lot of sense and while we have these dollars, it also makes a lot of sense to take advantage of that. So, um.
So I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
I thought I heard David say that utility issues are a factor. And then you say, that's not the only factor. And now I just heard you say, that's a factor.
Well, I don't think it's, well, what I was hearing from what Dave was saying was that it's the only factor, and I, I don't, I, I don't agree with that. So I, maybe I'm.
Or certainly a major factor.
It's a, it's a significant factor, but I don't, I also don't think that it killed all development projects in the last year either. So, um, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at with it. So I'll share as much information as I have when I get it um, with this group, and, um, certainly it'll probably be one of the dominant topics on agendas throughout the rest of the year. So any questions or concerns about that as we proceed forward? No, this is just an informational update.
Next is the MTA training and other training and opportunities.
Yeah, um, I'm looking to see, did anyone receive the email from MTA online that provided access to their online training resources? You all should have. I really just wanted to confirm that. So, um, what we had our team do over the last couple of months was add everybody, our boards and commissions, to get access to this. Township pays the MTA for access to these, to these trainings. There are several planning specific, planning zoning specific ones. I just want to make sure that it's on your radar to access those. You should be able to get in. Now, I think you have to make a username and login with MTA to access those, and you can watch them online. So I just want to make sure you have that resource available to you. There are, we can come back next month and talk about opportunities that MAP is providing for, um, this year. And then certainly anything else that you might be interested in, whether it's broad planning zoning stuff like the Citizen Planner, or, um, if it's very, you know, issue-specific training. So just want to make sure that you know that that door is open and that we are pursuing opportunities for different boards and commissions that work with our department.
It has been useful, at least for mine.
Yeah, good.
Alright, any other questions or comments regarding the, uh, MTA training? Alright, moving on to the twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting calendar.
Yeah, the, I got just an informational update. I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar. The board did publish its meeting calendar for the year. So nothing still on the second and fourth Mondays of each month here in this room. The only difference, um, is that in May, the clerk's office scheduled the meeting at twenty-seventh on that Tuesday to avoid the holiday. So we have a Memorial Day there in May, so we have a meeting on Tuesday. Um, if you could, please check your calendars to see if you'll be able to attend that meeting or if we'll need to reschedule that or just cancel it outright. Um, it would help us know as we, because we have to, um, provide notices and send things out well ahead of time for some of these applications, if there were to be a public hearing on that date. So maybe, um, next month, we can circle back with the team to see if anyone is out of town, not available. Or at least, you know, to the best of your knowledge at this, I know it's only January, but otherwise, yeah, the, the board adopts the calendar, it's set. So I just wanted to make sure you, you saw it and had a chance to, uh, consider it for the year.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So this calendar is published for the general public, is that?
It is.
Right, okay. So is it, I guess they, I guess they figure that out, that if there are no items, there's no meeting?
Yeah, as we get to each one, we can always cancel the, the meeting ahead of time.
How is the public move?
We'll put a notice on the website. They post notices on the physical doors for people that do come here in person. Really, those are the, the main ones. I think they're the only ones, frankly.
Any further questions, comments regarding meeting calendar? There being none, we'll move to public comment. There's no one here. Um, planning director comments, please.
Uh, nothing real big to add, other than we're glad to see everybody. Uh, we do have one more member of our team who's not here, and she won't be here. Sarah Anderton has joined us as a part-time department assistant. So, um, I mentioned her because she's going to hear this, because she's going to do the minutes for the meeting. So she'll, uh, hear you all in spirit and in voice and video, uh, after the fact. Um, so, yeah, she just started here last week. We're really excited to have that support. This office hasn't had that support for, uh, I don't know, a couple of years. What do you think, Dave?
Yeah, since Ann, which would have been probably twenty eighteen.
So it's been challenging for staff to attend the meetings, read the reports, and then also provide minutes and everything. So really to have her, have her on board. Uh, I did hand out a development projects list. I mean, this is just kind of my, I know the formatting, it needs to be probably be updated, but it's just kind of my trackings of the comings and goings in the township. The, probably the most exciting parts are the recently opened and then the closed ones. The, um, some of them I don't have firm updates on, you know, I'm, I'm part of the rumor mill as much as probably you are, with maybe a little bit more access. Um, so the, on the recently opened, the courtyard of Delta opened, um, it hasn't been a full launch yet, but they are all open. That's the assisted living uh, facility on, south of Walmart, on Marketplace Boulevard. I, I have received word under coming sooner from Anna's House. This has been on this list for a year and a half. Uh, they are planning, uh, they did file a demo permit for the interior of the space. So they're demoing the interior of the space and noted that they should be applying for a building permit to build out the space here in the next couple of weeks, so. Good, I mean, depending on your perspective on that particular place, it's a good sign. They did already paint the exterior, the white and the blue Anna's House color, so. Uh, Nature's Cure had closed a while back, and there's a takeout Pizza Hut going in there. Uh, I heard someone mention earlier the Zaytunes that had closed, a Sultan's that's been in East Lansing for, I think, thirty years. Um, and a couple of different locations will be moving out here to the Zaytune building. The construction of Horox right now is the addition of a bathroom space for their greenhouse building. Uh, they're also doing some interior work on their coffee to provide coffee drinks. That was in the LA City Journal, but also to expand the pizza, um, place. So right now, you can go in and get pizzas, and they're basically putting the pizza place where the, opening the pizza out to where the gelato stand is now and then moving. They're basically putting the pizza place where the, opening the pizza out to where the gelato stand is now, and then moving the gelato across the room. If you're in that room with me mentally, across the, on the other wall there. Um, and then finally, we had some restaurants, some places closed or over the last year. So if you have any questions about this, please do give me a call anytime, and I can. Give you a little more information if you need it, uh, this will come out, I try to track this and have a new copy every month.
I think Dick's Warehouse sounds a whole lot better than going, going, gone.
Yeah, some of the stuff we just catch like an assigned permit, you know, it's like no one calls us, hey, just want to tell you we're changing our name, we'll catch that on an assigned permit or some other note somewhere in a plan.
Hey, any questions regarding the, uh, development projects? There being none, the next item on the agenda is a chairman, unless commissioners have something they'd like to add. Then then Happy New Year.
I do.
Yes.
Uh. I I'm compelled, uh, this evening to. Further my comment regarding the self-storage building facilities. And with all due respect to the commissioners. Uh, I was disappointed that we did not approve that amendment. Um. I'm struck by, uh, when I. Travel the corridor, how the corridor came to look as it does now. And we actually, I think, had an example of that tonight. Um, because by. Not acting on this proposal. I think we heard, uh, Mr. Mentor say, uh, he's had inquiries previously. And with, uh, the failure of this from the planning commission, and maybe that will lead to the unlikely. Uh, scenario that the, uh, trustees will take it up, uh, I think we're going to see more. Self-storage facilities come before us. And we'll have no option. But to approve them for the corridor. So because we're in action, we're actually. Taking action on what that corridor will continue to look like. And given Peter's mention of the master planning process, as I said. There comes a point in time when we've done this work with a corridor improvement authority. And we all talk about how we want to improve the corridor. At the end of the day, that means some tough decisions have to be made, and either we're willing to make them or we're not.
Question or comments? There being none, now.
Yeah, I was going to do that. Move to the chair.
Thank you very much.
Support.
Moved and supported. You know, for both of us. Of gentlemen, we journey.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you.
Likewise.
I guess.
The way the corporate.
Now, I don't.
Stop.
There's still quite a few.